This is a great job park. This is a great place for family reunions. This is a great place with plenty of equipment. This would be a great place if you landscaped it right to even actually charge people to get married.
True, but keep in mind, we haven't done it yet, but we traded this driveway over here for the back part of their property so that we have the ability to put a sidewalk behind. So it goes to that subdivision that's over there. Plus, if this housing development next to us takes off, you've got a park that will handle both developments. So if you honestly think about wedding, you do want to think about a park.
So again, this goes back to the entire master plan. And the point of a park system is to expose your community to a variety of different options to recreate. You don't want all your parks to be exactly the same. Each park should do something a little bit different. You have different kinds of parks, pocket parks, limited parks, regional parks. And those all need to be identified and their purposes identified and standards set for them. And quite honestly, in our development code, when someone's doing a development, they should be required to set a sideline for a park within their development. I mean, you have that. We need to get all of these things.
Councilor Gordy, if I could please ask us, for me, these for me, don't bring up dog parks when Diane's here.
Are you pro or anti?
I think every white space in these parks is a great place for a dog park. It gets people out.
Listen, I'll tell you what that.
I want.
I'll tell you what that's all.
So again, let's remember, this, what we're giving you now is current need and current master plans. You will have the opportunity to say yea or nay again on multiple occasions before any of these projects are done. So let's, let's, Brandon, just go through them, hear them, write your notes. And then when we have future sessions, otherwise you're not getting out of here until midnight tonight. Honestly.
With that said, parks, I can probably, I can, don't hold me to this number completely. It might fluctuate a little, but plan on 100,000 for next year and probably the subsequent years. I can probably earmark 100 grand in a general fund for parks. That's what you get to play with.
That's a lot more than what we've had since I've been here. I mean, you had 60 and then you bumped another hundred for the last almost four years. So that's.
Let's hope I get to hold to that.
Yeah, that's going good.
And for Councilor Gerson, I did write your note about, there's nothing about parks on the east side.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward, water. Water, to be quite honest with you, is the one that concerns me the most. I think that right now our focus has been wastewater. I think that we have adequate funding and we know what we're doing. We have a plan for wastewater. We don't have that plan for water. And the water system doesn't have the funding available for a lot of stuff. So this is the one that I kind of urge you to pay more particular attention to as you're kind of plotting out what you think would be beneficial. In the current fiscal year, Public Works did the sodium hypochlorite upgrade at the water treatment plant. As far as a water reservoir, the original intent was to, one, find a location for a new reservoir to go or rehab a current existing reservoir. For those of you unaware, I think it was, what, 10th Avenue?
10th Avenue.
Off of 10th Avenue, there was a reservoir that was leaking fairly significantly. It was finally isolated once it was found and taken offline. So we are down on one of our standard reservoirs. And that was kind of the intent behind this project.
So leaking about 20,000 gallons a day or more.
Wow.
That's amazing. At the time, the best we could.
And once it dropped to a certain point, then the water system was pushing water into it to fill it back up so that the adequate reserve existed. So it was, it was a big source of our, of some of our water issues in the city. So Public Works had hoped to basically scout and find the best option. And last fiscal year, that didn't happen. They're working on it now with our existing.
So let's just talk about that. You talk about when we talk water modeling real quick, water modeling. You say we're not doing anything. We took that $300,000. We're looking at the whole tire system, where our water's flowing, how it's flowing, pressures and capacities, which is part of that review. That review is occurring right now.
Which is what I, which is what I said.
Prepare, have plans, we're developing those plans or continue to bring you those plans.
So that $300,000 has been working with engineers for pre-planning, modeling and all that. Once we find out where we need it, then we'll go and design and build exactly where it is or rehab.
Well, as I mentioned, the red box means it didn't happen last year when it was planned. But this is currently happening in the given fiscal year.
Greg, just to clarify, the funding there for those things that are red box, I think.
Yes, the funding is already existing as we approved them unless it, unless it was further out. So like this project, for example, is a red box in the further fiscal year that we haven't identified yet.
But for this last.
Yes, yes. All right, the next part of that will be to either construct a new reservoir or rehab a current reservoir. I don't, they're estimating that price tag at 2.5 million dollars. And that is one I don't have a funding source for. To give you a general idea, our capital, we have two funds in the water side that have capital reserves basically that we can use. One has 280,000 in available dollars and the other one has 145,000.
A lot of money. So if I have a little green check by all of the ones that we don't have to worry about funding, that that is already there, right? Are some of them not funded? You know, then we could sort through our heads easier with not having to make notes.
Okay.
Which ones that we need to be more concerned about because they're not funded.
Okay, I can certainly tweak this particularly.
Can you kind of green hand me a few?
Okay. Yeah, I will tweak this after we're done here and while you're eating dinner. And then I'll give it to you so you can look it up. Okay, so 2.5 million dollars. I don't know where that's going to come from. We definitely are going to have to find that. That size is, is loan potential, in my opinion. You're not going to be able to put aside reserves without raising the rates a heck of a lot. You're not going to be able to set aside 2.5 million dollars, especially in a time that we would likely need it. So we may have to incur debt for that piece. Something to consider, that is an option.
But as development occurs on the north side, out in that area with new per SDCs, there could be funding or with developers potentially help some of that capacity if they're going to do a subdivision and stuff.
But that could take a lot, that could take a long time before we see that.
Yeah.
And since it's a replacement reservoir potentially, I don't know that I could really qualify it for STCs because it was already a part of our existing system. We just had to take it offline because it was busted.
We do have to increase size.
If we increase size, yes. All right, two inch mains. So we talked a lot about this. This is a very large section. There are a lot of two inch mains that Public Works has identified as projects that need to occur in the next, within the next five years. And unfortunately, as you can see, many of them are labeled with to be determined. Some of them are fairly sizable as far as dollars are concerned. So this Nandina project, ninth, from 9th Avenue to 15th Avenue, they've estimated it $605,000. Juniper and Ironwood, even more, 800,000. And just the two inch main projects alone that I don't know where I'm going to fund them is 3.4 million dollars. I'm going to, yeah, 3.4 million. That's a pretty hefty price tag.
Greg, I thought we did something on Spruce Street. Am I missing something?
There's multiple spruces.
I understand that.
We did, we did off, we did off 12th. There are 11 homes. We put a small second room. It's about 100 feet.
For some reason, I don't understand Spruce Street. Okay, you're good.
So 3.4 million, that's a pretty hefty price tag. We're going to identify what's important over the next five years. I don't think you're going to get 3.4 million dollars out of rates. The Northern Transmission Main, this was a project that was on the original CIP. Public Works in their current proposal has pushed the entire Northern Transmission Main project out past the five-year capital improvement plan. So we've taken that off the books, at least for now.
Waiting for developer.
They have also, the original plan called for updating a master plan of 100,000 that is tentatively scheduled for the 2024 fiscal year. And we will likely use operating funds to cover that cost. They have added projects in their new requests this year. The first two, there's two of them here, backflow pumps and variable flow device. Those have gone through council as far as discussions. Those two are moving forward in this current fiscal year, will likely roll from what I understand. We identified funding in the existing budget for those items. And so we're going to remain, they're going to remain and they're going to get finished using the two available capital funds for water. But the, these three new projects, the SCADA upgrade in sync with the sewer plant, the self-service bulk water station and the Canyon Creek Pump Station are all items that I don't have identified funding for, along with the two inch mains and the, and the reservoir stuff. So overall, in this, in this capital improvement plan, water projects comes to a total of 10, 10,120,000 dollars. Big price tag when I only have probably 400,000 dollars in reserves. Herein lies our problem.
I did say three and a half years ago, about three years, we had gaps. Just there's, it just aged. It doesn't work right. It never was taking, the plant wasn't, when it was designed and built 11 years ago, it wasn't taking into consideration how it would operate with the plant.
We will, with the existing bond refinancing that we're doing, we'll be able to shore up some extra funding. Not a lot, probably 100 grand. But we'll be able to use some of that money as we save some over the next three years. And then beyond, we'll, we'll save little bits, but it's not nearly enough to combat projects.
So isn't the water more important than parks?
Yes, and certainly we could use general fund monies to cover water projects if we decided. So the beauty of the general fund is you're not, it's, that's what I'm looking for. Unreserved.
Discretionary.
Discretionary, thank you. Discretionary funding. So yes, you could decide that you want to take some of the general fund money and shuffle it over to help aid the water system so that we're not raising rates at least as high.
The next one.
Right, or that. That's, so that's certainly an option. And yes, there's always, that's part of the balance that you all get, the pleasure of is, where are the priorities? So is the priority, we need to focus on the water system? So we're going to have to put some of the park stuff aside. Maybe that's it, I don't know.
My biggest, I guess, question, the answer you guys have is looking at how much development is going on here in Sleep Home. There's where I think the priorities need to be is in the infrastructure. And I think you mentioned that the STCs are not something to get right away. But I think with as much development that's going on, our priorities may want to look at those areas that are impacted by those developments. I don't know if there is any or at all.
Well, I know as new development comes in, we look at what their responsibilities are. And I don't know, when somebody's coming in and building one house, how do you say, okay, now you have to build a park, you have to put in this sewer line, you have to do all these things. So when a house gets built here and there, it's really difficult to put that on these little developers. But if they're going to come in and do 10 to 100 homes, then that's what we want them to do a little bit more. There's requirements that they're going to have to meet. The problem is we just don't see that. In California, you see thousands of homes going in at once. They build your parks, they build your reservoirs, they build your specs and you get it when it's done. So I think we haven't traditionally had STCs here that could be used in any significant amounts. So I think how we go forward and how we're legally allowed to use those STCs, I think it's going to be determined in how we go forward and use those. Do we rather help with some, some development I had in and help build a reservoir to support that? Or do we take it and keep it for over here and have them do it? I think there's still a lot of things that we have to figure out.
I guess I get back to, you have some developers that their mindset is, okay, I bought this huge, I bet this huge property. Okay, I'm going to come in and I'm going to do one or two houses at a time. Sell them and then build the next one or two and then just keep doing it until they get 30 or 50, or 100 built. Their mindset is that's cheaper than doing it all in one big film. Develop at one time. You don't force that.
That's something that we've talked about recently in our department because there, there was a recent property line adjustment and partition that was, that came to us where it's a developer doing that exact thing. He had a larger area, but he's only carving off little tiny pieces at a time. And so that street, the street infrastructure that's servicing that area is not adequate for that development. But because of the way he's doing it, we don't have anything in our coast keeping from doing it. That's something that we're hoping to correct with our development.
That was my, one of my concerns, but you were talking about priorities and infrastructure. That's where, knowing that's what they're not up to. To burn our infrastructure for that.
We do need to make sure that it doesn't pay for it.
So on the water side, we have for about 400,000 dollars available to date. However, keep in mind that would drain our capital reserves. That's up to you to decide if that's the way to approach it. We do take about 280,000 dollars a year from user fees and set it into capital reserves. So some, there's something. All right, wastewater. There isn't a lot here because our primary focus is the treatment plant. We have secured what we believe is the funding source. We know what we're doing with it anyways. And we have some contingencies if things go a little bit sideways. Particularly as the mayor mentioned, we're still cautiously optimistic about our 7 million dollars from the state. But anyways, this project will move forward. So we will, we will have the funding and everything situated for that one way or another. A couple of just kind of standard annual things that Public Works usually has gotten out of operating funds, basically, user fees is just basic rehabilitation of existing infrastructure. So kind of rehabbing existing manholes and replacing any, any major, major issues in the system as they develop. One project that was originally on the list was a collections line upsize right near McDonald's in the police department. Right, right at that space, it goes from a 12-inch sewer main down to an eight-inch main. And the idea was we basically fixed that so that it was all 12 inches all the way. That project was estimated at 220,000. Public Works in their most recent document that they gave me have decided to push that project off of the five-year plan, likely to get through the treatment plant and the, what does that everything, the lot, the land, the, where's, where's all of our bios, solid.
Oh, regional composting.
Regional composting. So once we get past all of that stuff, we can probably turn our attention back to the overall collection system. But those are major priorities. This last year, 2020, so the one that ended last June, they did throw in a sewer main replacement on Osage Street. And it cost us about 15,000. We did it in-house. It was due to some construction and folks tying into a sewer main that already backed up on a fairly regular basis. And so it was determined that we really needed to get that line fixed in order for them to hook up. So that was an unanticipated capital item, but had to be done. Storm. There was initially some drainage improvements for undersized culverts on Long from 37th to 38th Avenue for 65,000. 65,000 is the entire storm budget on an annual, on an annual basis. That project was originally slated for 2020 and I said, no, we don't have the money. They've since asked to try and get it done next year. They're likely going to meet the same fate, but it depends on what we do with the stormwater fee. It is currently at a dollar for, for EDU, basically. So residential units are charged a dollar a month for it. Commercial and business is based on previous space and size of lot. Some calculation, I don't know off the top of my head.
Am I wrong or some of this 65,000 dollars for drainage improvements, isn't some of that for a point?
So right now in the stormwater budget, stormwater operating budget, yes. Of the 65,000 that we generate in user fees a year, we spend about half of that on a halftime person for their salary and benefits. So that we have, I mean, they're doing some stormwater work. And then the rest goes towards just general supplies to keep afloat what we have to the best of our abilities.
For me, that saves the gas tax. You know, back in the day when things, well, I understand this, right back in the day when things got a little tough, you know, and everything. And our wonderful government decided to let them take money out of that, gas on pay, wages and benefits. I hate that. I absolutely hate it. You know, we designated 65,000 dollars for this drainage thing and now we're using half of it, at least, probably almost half of it for, for wages and benefits. That just drives me nuts. I understand, I do understand it to a certain degree, but I don't like it.
And it always comes down, it always comes down to the age old, old question of if it's not coming from there, where's it coming? And so that's where, yes, you could redefine the, the purpose of the general fund. You could say that the staff members are going to become funded by general fund dollars in order to support that. So then.
Sure, sure. So do so.
What are you giving up? I, especially over the next few months, you will probably not see me as your favorite staff member because I regularly have to bring you bad news when it comes to budgets. Sometimes I get to bring you good news. Sometimes I get to tell you our revenues are higher. We have more revenue than we, than we anticipated in the next budget cycle. But usually then it's coupled with, what do you want to do with it? So I'll, I'll do this in advance for the next six months. Because that's probably what I'll end up bringing to you. There was a plan to update the, the master plan. That was supposed, their original request had that happening next year. Their most recent proposal has pushed that one fiscal year out, likely because they know that the funding isn't necessarily there right now. They did add two new projects. One is a catch basin installation at 12th Avenue in Elm for 25,000 that they've put out into the 2024 fiscal year. And then a Cotton Creek Drainage Improvement Project estimated at 400,000 dollars and to take place in 2025 and 2026. Without additional revenue for the stormwater program, that's not going to happen. The dollars just don't exist unless we find a grant.
That project is to help get that water out of your neighborhood. It's to help grab it and get it out of there quicker. So instead of it coming in and kind of sitting there trying to get out, we're going to try to do something out of night to get it out of there. So it just goes through.
I'm more concerned with the drinking water coming through the pipes. I'm worried about the line.
Different ones.
City has.
Yeah, and that is one of the things to consider is that is a severe, that is a huge liability. You know, much like we have responsibilities when it comes to wastewater and its discharge. Providing water is a basic city function.
Yes, I think it's hard to stomach this.
See, I told you, it wasn't going to be your favorite.
Anything else in the waters and that's such of a disrepair.
On the street side, there is a significant number of overlay projects that Public Works has been looking for. We were able to complete one in the current fiscal year on 29th Avenue thanks to leveraging a new agreement that we've been able to partner with Lynn County on that project. So thankfully that is done, but others still exist on the list. Greg and the team have identified potential state funding from the State Transportation Block Grant Program that we may be able to leverage some of that, those dollars to complete some of these projects. But as you'll notice, a majority of these projects all have a to be determined. One of the existing problems for us on the street side is we receive our dollars from gas taxes generated by the state. They allocate those based on a calculation surrounding population and number of miles per road, road surfaces. Due to COVID, we lost, what, 8%? I think it was about 40,000 dollars a year in state gas tax money. That hurt quite a bit. As a result, we did leave one position out of the existing year budget. So they are down in full FTE. I don't intend on bringing that back next fiscal year, to be quite honest. I don't, I don't think the funding will exist. And that's, that's hard for them, that's hard for Public Works certainly. And that's never news that I like to deliver. Not only am I not your friends, I'm not department friends either. So anyhoo's, so there's a significant number of projects as far as overlays are concerned. And we have to weigh, you know, are those overlays important? What is the criticality of those overlays? The radar speed signs, we have the speed signs, they're on site. We're just waiting to get them up. The Highway 20 Stip project, this is a project that we are already on the book, on the hook for. We've signed the contracts, that's all done. It's been a long time coming. And I think they started this process in 2015. Well, 2012. Thank you. 2012, and we are sitting here in 2021 and there are just, we are anticipating that they will move forward finally with construction this, when the weather gets nicer.
Only grew up on a lake.
I don't intend to, yes. And that's part, so we've also seen, and you've, you're well, you're familiar with this, I'm sure, but we've also seen how that project has gone from one scope down to a significantly smaller portion. And that, a lot of that has to do with, you know, you start a project in 2012, here's construction costs and labor costs and everything else in that year. And you're now nine years down the road.
One, two, and four, seven, like.
So.
Brendan.
Yes.
Excuse me, but we are paying for that in installments, are we not now?
We are paying basically as the work is completed. So right now, we've, we finally started, we had an initial down payment on that program. And now that down payment has dried up and we are beginning to pay for, essentially them to do site evaluations and surveying, that kind of work right now.
Okay, so they, they already have done surveying once and obviously they'll have to do it again before the project can begin. So, but this 300,000 is not going to be 300,000, right? I mean, I mean, it's going to be 300,000, but we actually have been paying on it, have we not?
We anticipate that a full 300,000 will be expended between now and probably September.
Okay, thank you.
So yes, it will be 300.
It's our share.
That's just, yeah, that's our share. The down payment consisted of about 25,000 is what we put into this. And so the additional 300,000 is, is what is marked as the city's share of this project.
Because we made two payments in the last, on the last statement that you had in the, in the agenda.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that 25,000 has, has been used by the state for various planning needs. And we've moved into, it's time for us to start contributing our match.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. Paving gravel roads, there's a list of them in there. Juniper Grape Loop, I won't read them all. Originally on the CIP, that project was proposed for next fiscal year. Public Works has pushed that out to 2024. I don't have funding identified for that yet. And then Harding Street, half-street improvement, 300,000. Again, I don't have identified funding. One thing in the streets program for you all to be aware of is we do have a street maintenance improvement fund that has over about a million dollars in it. I think it's actually 1.2 million right now. That money came from the county when the city annexed and took over a portion of former county land. I don't know what the original intent of those funds were for. That was, that was long before me. That was done in the 90s, I want to say. In that area, would, would have been the anticipated intent of those funds. We are still sitting on it. Basically, we earn before COVID about 20,000 a year in interest earnings on that million dollars that we have over time cycled into smaller projects. We could choose to sit on that million dollar reserve or we could choose to plow through as much as we can with that million dollars and then it's on. So again, the council consideration, something we can talk about in a work session before we line out our budget. We need to decide what we want to do with that existing funding. Do you remember that we are borrowing from that fund to cover a new street? Greg, do you remember the price tag on that sweeper?
Two or six change.
So I'll say 200,000, we're taking 200,000 of that and repayable over 10 years from the gas tax fund. We will, we will basically pay it back. So we'll have that million dollars, but it will take 10 years to use back to. Well, now, did we do it in five? Five or 10, I'd have to look at it. But you can assume that you have a million dollars to lose.
Question, Brandon?
Yeah.
If with the other funding that Greg was talking about from the state, you added that funding and made a bigger project, are there economies of scale that could be gained from that? Since you already have some people mobilized in, kick in more city funding, you get more done?
Potentially, yes. You know, certainly if contractors are already here doing one project and they're just shuffling all the equipment to another, likely your mobilization and demobilization costs will be lower. So yes, if you can leverage the time that you have right now to get the documents ready, to get the bids out, to get the bids back, and then do a multitude of projects and find somebody who has the capacity to do that many, then yes. Likely not going to happen, I would imagine. The last, oh, total street projects in this capital plan, two and a half million dollars. The last part is the fleet. We've done a lot of work to replace aging equipment or equipment that didn't exist. Purchased equipment that did, that we didn't have before. A snowplow was really important for us. There was a year, just two years ago, I think, that there was, there was a pretty good storm that hit the city. Our, you know, Main Street was nicely plowed, thank you, oh, dot. But the city didn't have any tools and equipment to plow its, its own roads. So that, that caused some, some issues. Public Works did the best they could with, with a.
Creator.
Creator and VACO, but it certainly was not ideal. So we did purchase a snowplow, we did purchase some leak detection equipment to better identify on our own where the leaks are in our system instead of farming that out to a third party every year. And, and then there's some additional equipment that, that was purchased. All of this equipment was purchased with reserves that are transferred annually out from each of the public works areas. It's a small amount generally, that equipment reserve has been on a building over the last 10 or 15 years. And we've made a decision, the budget committees and the councils of the past have made a decision that it's time to start using funding. So we've been doing so. Estimated for this year, there, we are in process of purchasing a new VACO. And then this F-150 on this list is being replaced as part of the enterprise pricing agreement. So down the road. This, the Public Works has identified a replacement Mack truck. Is that a five yard? And, and you're. A Kubota mower and a forklift that'll be necessary for their operations. A Vector truck is the, why does it keep doing that? A Vector truck is the biggest item in this equipment list. Our Vector truck is how old?
I want to say 18.
18 years.
20.
It has been band-aided, there's been band-aids applied many times over. It is at that point where it's time for us to consider replacement.
You're starting to see welds and stuff that are having to be touched up. Tommy's had to weld certain parts on the frame and stuff like, it's a big piece of equipment. It's just got the years on it, the rubber, the metal is, you know, starting to see signs. I think personally, we can keep it going for another year or two. Vectors, you just don't go down to the vector store and say, hey, I want that, we just drive it home. You actually got to spec it out, you got to work with the company. It usually takes a year or a year just to get the chassis together and get it. If it's Vector, it goes to Springfield, Illinois, and they manufacture it on its own. If we get a used one, then, you know, we have to look at those and take all that into consideration. But that's the cost for a new one, and it does take some time.
Can you briefly cover the uses for that Vector?
Yeah, so that Vector is probably our most important piece of equipment. It is there to really block just the storm, uh, storm pipes, which we used recently. We use it for cleaning our entire sewer system. We also use it for removing debris, whether it be solids out of the wastewater plant or anywhere where we got to remove soil. We are now using the heck out of it on our water side. We use it to excavate around electrical lines and things that we just can't get in and get a VACO. We can actually bring that piece of equipment in. We have a lawn that allows us to spray high-pressure water. And it kind of just cuts the dirt off and we suck it out. Very, it's not a basic to a certain infrastructure, less damaging, you can actually get a repair done within a couple hours. So you're seeing a lot more agencies use vectors instead of VACOs, especially in the streets where, you know, they, it's really tiny, they have all these different communications. You see it more in big cities that way. They actually manufacture vectors that are solely for the water side. They have from sewer side to the big hose rail on the front, but they just make these giant excavators. It's becoming that big of a shield. So the excavator to us, or the Vector to us is, it's a multi, multi-tool that does many, many different things throughout, many different departments.
So that's the end of my list, and now that I have severely bummed you out, right before dinner. Does anybody have questions for me? Are there things that I can stand on?
How many more they need to make Mack trucks anymore?
I have a question just for Greg. How do we know what's, I mean, you put these on timeline, you put them on the timeline for what you thought was most important, we did that first.
Yes, well, for the most part, yes. We do prioritize them and then, you know, I, there's another list beyond this. Really huge that we, it just keeps getting bigger and bigger. Things that we see that need to be repaired is fixed. Something granted to figure out how we're going to pay for. Once he says there's funding, then we're going to figure out how to do it. There's way more projects to be up. I'm surprised.
So we are now well behind schedule, just, which is okay, because it's been really good discussion. So what I'd like to do is ask you, jot down your notes, you're going to see a CIP, we can do a work session. All of those things, we can continue to talk about them, again, jot down your notes, reach out to us, send an email to Brandon, Greg and I. Depending or Brandon and I and whichever department head that, that the item falls under, if you have questions going on. And we can, we can set some time up where you can come in and we can kind of go through it all. We'll do that all with you individually, we'll do it during the work session. But right now I need to ask you to head to eat. So that we can get out of here in a decent hour. Otherwise, I didn't, I didn't plan for pillows and blankets.
You only got one page.
Over the next day.
And I'm not struggling.
So we still have two things to cover. We talked about boards and committees, and I still have my report to give to you.
Senator.
Yep, let's try out that door again, round and back in. Okay, so forth. And we'll try to do, I'll, I'll give my spiel. I'm going to eat real quick and then I'll give my spiel as you're eating. So we can get out of our equipment.
We're, we're the teenagers.
We're the team agents.
Any questions on this? Okay, you've already heard the inner workings of the city all day today, and probably in greater detail than you really hoped to, thanks to some people going over their time limits. Just.
So.
Right. So can we put my. Sure, talk about admin a little bit, and so you've already heard the inner workings. So what I want to talk to you about a little bit is what I'm trying to build this organization into. First, we'll go through our, how we're set up currently. Pretty simple. You got me, you got the department heads, we have Julie and Legia. We're gonna ask in this next budget for another position. And it's gonna be a, an IT position, essentially. Brandon can't continue to do what he's doing. It's not right, it's not fair, and we're completely taking advantage of him and his skill sets. We're taking away time from his family. Like I said, I get emails from him at 11:30 at night. He's putting nine, 10, 11 hours in here and going home and doing more. And God bless him for that, but it's not fair. We certainly don't pay him enough for that. And the thing that we can do is, you know, we pay a lot of money to our contracted IT services. Brandon does a lot of stuff like desktop PC support for everybody. He's at the police department, he's at the library, he's at Public Works. He's all over here in City Hall helping people with their computers because it's cheaper. And we've done some, some math, I guess, or analysis. And we just need to bring, by bringing somebody in that's kind of a desktop support specialist, that's gonna free Brandon up to focus on finance and courts, which is where he needs to have his focus. The support specialist will do all of the work in the city, maintain our network, and then will still utilize step up for any major projects or projects or things that we need. But again, that's on a contracted basis, so we are gonna ask for this position. It will be an internal service position. Every department is in on this. Every department has said, yes, we need this position. We need more support. We need more support than what Brandon can give us. We need more time than what Brandon can give us. And everybody's willing to pay for that. So you will see that we asked for that position upcoming. Brandon's already worked up a job description. We did reach out to Lebanon about trying to work with them on a position. I don't know that that's completely out of. There's still a small possibility that could happen. The city of Lebanon does Lebanon Fire as well. And so we were kind of hoping we could regionalize because we're not sure we really needed a full-time person or not, but we're still trying to work out those details. So we'll let you know, but we're definitely gonna ask for that help in this next budget.
So what do we pay for our contractor now?
We're paying him over $5,000 a month.
A month?
Yeah. And we get good service from them, don't get me wrong, but it's not great service, right? When we have an issue, if they can't get in and fix it remotely, then you gotta wait a day or two or a week before they come, or Brandon has to do it. So. Yeah, it's just gonna be better all the way around that way. We won't have to pay them nearly as much. And again, I feel awful for Brandon.
So my next question is, is he gonna work or is she gonna work 40 hours a week?
We're still looking at that. We're not sure if it's gonna be full-time or not. But we'll bring all that to you in the budget. We'll have all of that for you when we bring a budget to you. We're still finalizing the job description and working. It's gonna be close. It'll probably be between 32 and 40. So. I mean, Brandon spends easily 20-plus hours a week right now doing IT support for all of us. I mean, he spends way more time doing that than you do. I feel like my parents. That's what I remember. I always have a joke when I was a kid, like when I went away to college, I'd get a phone call from my dad. Hey, the clock on the VCR just keeps blinking. How do I set it? Okay, you gotta push that button. That's what I feel like now. Brandon, I can't pray. Help me, please. So. I don't know how many times my mom got called. Power went out. I'm getting stuck in the VCR. So. So I'm gonna talk to you about what I've been working on and will continue to work to make our organization. And what you're gonna hear me talk about. I love this stuff. I think it's a lot of fun. I think it's been a huge challenge, and I think we're making great strides to get to the kind of organization that I envision we can be. And so I'm gonna talk to you about where I've gotten this information. A lot of it's in my experiences. So I have always been in change management. My first full-time job in Parks and Rec was taking over a seasonal three-acre water park, which I employed 60 kids between the ages of 14 and 24. And there was a drowning. Somebody died. Just a year, two years, a year before. It wasn't a well-run facility. It wasn't a poorly-run facility, but they had a lot of room for some improvement. I learned a ton from that job. I then went to my second job, which was Efrain, where I spent 13 years, ironically, right after a drowning. Somebody died there. We only hired about 40 to 45 kids in a smaller facility. But I also was taking over an entire Parks and Rec department, which, shall we say, operated in old-fashioned form or methodologies. So I've always been change management, and that was working with Wes. And Wes and I worked side by side for 13 years. I went in there as the Director of Recreation, where I left 13 years later. I was Director of Community Services and quasi-Assistant City Administrator by that point. So Wes and I used to have a lot of fun with this stuff. And there was a lot of stuff that I didn't even realize we were doing, and we were doing it. And then when I did my master's program, it focused a lot immensely on culture and organizational health. So I've learned a ton from that. So I'm gonna talk to you about where I've read a lot of this stuff. I'm gonna talk to you about some books. The first one is called The Advantage. Patrick Lencioni, if you haven't read his books, you should. If you have any interest in organizational health, you need to read. They're great stories. Leadership, like I said before, is a multi-billion dollar industry right now. Everybody's trying to tell you how to lead. Patrick Lencioni does it in the simplest, most entertaining way, period. He has a whole series of books. First book I read was The Advantage, and we'll talk about it. We've also read The Five Dysfunctions of Team. We actually took that book and I have it actually in your office. So I'm gonna hand it out to each of you so that you can see five dysfunctions of a team. Great book, great book. We're also gonna talk about his book, The Ideal Team Player. That book, we handed out to all the department heads and many of the staff have read it as well. And I've mentioned it to you before, but The Ideal Team Player is literally the roadmap that I had already developed in my head of how I hire. And it helped me understand why I was doing some of the things that I was just inherently doing. It also clarified for me why I was doing it. I was super blessed. My mentors, first of all, professionally have all been women until I met Wes. So my first full-time mentor was a, how would you say? Well, she was a high school dropout. And had started as a volunteer in Moses Lake and just kind of done so much that they ended up hiring her in Parks and Rec, and she was amazing. And she was smart. She came from a very difficult background growing up. She was a wonderful woman. She died of cancer several years ago. But was the reason I went into Parks and Recreation. She's about this tall, and nobody messed with her. Nobody messed with this woman. Mary Cunningham was her name. She actually did a lot of these skills, and she just had learned them. And I watched and observed her hire this way for our staff. And then when I went into management, I was like, she explained things to me, and I'm like, okay. And then I went through, you know, college, and nobody taught me any of that stuff. And then I got my master's program in organizational health and whatnot, and I was reading things that people had spent millions of dollars studying, social psychologists and whatnot, and Mary had been doing it for 30 years. I'm gonna refer to this called The Radical Leap. If you remember back about four years ago, we had John. Last name, Morgan. Morgan came, and he did sessions with the staff. He did a morning and afternoon session on this book. And we've clung to that ever since then. Every month, I meet with, well, until COVID, I would meet with each department over about the past 18 months. And we would talk about The Radical Leap, and, excuse me, LEAP is an acronym. We'll talk about that. Managing transitions. Managing transitions was from my master's program. It talked about change management. And the other book is one I've read recently called Fortitude by Dan Crenshaw. Former Lieutenant Commander Dan Crenshaw, former Navy SEAL.
It's a good book.
It's a great book, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes. He's a House Representative out of Texas. He's a fan, apparently. Really good book. Trying to get my boys to read it, actually. Hey, Navy SEALs, it's cool, isn't it? Right? I'll also talk about a book called Unusually Excellent, and we don't make widgets. Are you good? What is that?
It's a mess.
It's an IHOP breakfast.
It's a breakfast. I put that up there because Peter Drucker is credited with a quote. There's actually a lot of discrepancy if he's the one who said it, that culture eats strategy for breakfast. I think you've heard me say that before. Culture absolutely does eat strategy for breakfast. It's more important that we worry about our culture as an organization because then everything else will fall in line. Well, how do we know that? Well, if you read The Advantage, and Patrick Lencioni does a great job because he tells a story. It's just a good book. It's a good read. It's a pretty simple, fast read. And he tells you a story, and then he starts to outline at the end how his principles apply. First thing is you have to build a cohesive leadership team. I've had to do that here. I think we have that. If you look around the people here, you saw we had fun today, for the most part. We laugh, we joke, but we work hard. We're a pretty cohesive unit. We're a good team. And then the struggle now is these people have to do the same thing within their departments. They have to build a cohesive leadership team within each department. But their first allegiance has to be to us. We're varsity. This is the varsity team. They have to have their allegiance to us.
Brandon's already worked up a job description. We did reach out to Lebanon about trying to work with them on a position. I don't know that that's completely out of. There's still a small possibility that could happen. The city of Lebanon does Lebanon fire as well. And so we were kind of hoping we could regionalize because we're not sure we really needed a full time person or not, but we're still trying to work out those details. So we'll let you know, but we're definitely going to ask for that help in this next budget.
So what do we pay for our contractor now?
We're paying him over five thousand a month.
A month?
And we get good service from them, don't get me wrong, but it's not great service. Right? When we have an issue, if they can't get in and fix it remotely, then you gotta wait a day or two or a week before they come. Or Brandon has to do it. So. Yeah, it's just gonna be better all the way around that way. We won't have to pay them nearly as much. And again, I feel awful for Brandon.
So my next question is, is he gonna work or is she gonna work forty hours a week?
We're still looking at that. We're not sure if it's gonna be full time or not.
Okay.
But we'll bring all that to you in the budget. We'll have all of that for you when we bring a budget to you. Still finalizing the job description and working. It's gonna be close. It'll probably be between thirty-two and forty. So. I mean, Brandon spends easily twenty plus hours a week right now doing IT support for all of us. I mean, he spends way more time doing that than you do. I feel like my parents. That's what I remember. I always have a joke when I was a kid, like when I went away to college, I'd get a phone call from my dad, hey, the clock on the VCR just keeps blinking. How do I set it? Okay, you gotta push that button. That's what I feel like now. Brandon, I can't pray. Help me, please. So. I don't know how many times my mom would get called, power went out. I'm getting stuck in the VCR. So. So I'm gonna talk to you about what I've been working on and will continue to work to make our organization and what you're gonna hear me talk about. I love this stuff. I think it's a lot of fun. I think it's been a huge challenge and I think we're making great strides to get to the kind of organization that I envision we can be. And so I'm gonna talk to you about where I've gotten this information. A lot of it's in my experiences. So I have always been in change management. My first full-time job in Parks and Rec was taking over a seasonal three-acre water park, which I employed sixty kids between the ages of fourteen and twenty-four. And there was a drowning. Somebody died. Just a year, two years before, a year before. It wasn't a well-run facility. It wasn't a poorly run facility, but they had a lot of room for some improvement. I learned a ton from that job. I then went to my second job, which was Ephrata, where I spent thirteen years, ironically, right after a drowning. Somebody died there. We only hired about forty to forty-five kids in the smaller facility. But I also was taking over an entire Parks and Rec department, which shall we say operated in old-fashioned form or methodologies. So I've always been change management and that was working with Wes. And Wes and I worked side by side for thirteen years. I went in there as the Director of Recreation, where I left thirteen years later. I was Director of Community Services and quasi-Assistant City Administrator by that point in time, so. Wes and I used to have a lot of fun with this stuff and there was a lot of stuff that I didn't even realize we were doing and we were doing it. And then when I did my master's program, it focused a lot immensely on culture and organizational health. So I've learned a ton from that. So I'm gonna talk to you about where I've read a lot of this stuff. I'm gonna talk to you about some books. The first one is called The Advantage. Patrick Lencioni, if you haven't read his books, you should. If you have any interest in organizational health, you need to read. They're great stories. Leadership, like I said before, is a multi-billion dollar a year industry right now. Everybody's trying to tell you how to lead. Patrick Lencioni does it in the simplest, most entertaining way, period. He has a whole series of books. First book I read was The Advantage. And we'll talk about it. We've also read The Five Dysfunctions of Team. We actually took that book and I have it actually in your office. So I'm gonna hand it out to each of you so that you can see five dysfunctions of a team. Great book, great book. We're also gonna talk about his book, The Ideal Team Player. That book, we handed out to all the department heads and many of the staff have read it as well. And I've mentioned it to you before, but The Ideal Team Player is literally the roadmap that I had already developed in my head of how I hire. And it helped me understand why I was doing some of the things that I was just inherently doing. It also clarified for me why I was doing it. I was super blessed. My mentors, first of all, professionally have all been women until I met Wes. So my first full-time mentor was a, how would you say? Well, she was a high school dropout. And had started as a volunteer in Moses Lake and just kind of done so much that they ended up hiring her in Parks and Rec. And she was amazing. And she was smart. She came from a very difficult background growing up. She was a wonderful woman. She died of cancer several years ago. But was the reason I went into Parks and Recreation. She's about this tall and nobody messed with her. Nobody messed with this woman. Mary Cunningham was her name. She actually did a lot of these skills and she just had learned them. And I watched and observed her hire this way for our staff. And then when I went into management, I was like, she explained things to me and like, okay. And then I went through, you know, college and nobody taught me any of that stuff. And then I got my master's program in organizational health and whatnot. And I was reading things that people had spent millions of dollars studying, social psychologists and whatnot, and Mary had been doing it for thirty years. I'm gonna refer to this called The Radical Leap. If you remember back about four years ago, we had John. Boston.
Morgan.
Morgan. Came and he did sessions with the staff. He did a morning and afternoon session on this book. And we've clung to that ever since then. Every month I meet with, well, until COVID, I would meet with each department over about the past eighteen months. And we would talk about The Radical Leap and, excuse me, LEAP is an acronym. We'll talk about that. Managing Transitions. Managing Transitions was from my master's program. It talked about change management. And the other book is one I read recently called Fortitude by Dan Crenshaw. Former Lieutenant Commander Dan Crenshaw, former Navy SEAL.
It's a good book.
It's a great book, isn't it?
Yes.
He's a House of Representatives out of Texas. He's a fan, apparently. Yes. Really good book. Trying to get my boys to read it, actually. Hey, Navy SEALs, it's cool, right? Also talk about a book called Unusually Excellent. And We Don't Make Widgets. All good? What is that?
It's a mess.
It's an IHOP breakfast.
It's a breakfast. I put that up there because Peter Drucker is credited with a quote. There's actually a lot of discrepancy if he's the one who said it, that culture eats strategy for breakfast. And I think you've heard me say that before. Culture absolutely does eat strategy for breakfast. It's more important that we worry about our culture as an organization because then everything else will fall in line. Well, how do we know that? Well, if you read The Advantage and Patrick Lencioni does a great job because he tells a story. It's just a good book. It's a good read. It's a pretty simple, fast read. And he tells you a story and then he starts to outline at the end how his principles apply. First thing is you have to build a cohesive leadership team. I've had to do that here. I think we have that. If you look around the people here, you saw, we had fun today for the most part. We laugh, we joke, but we work hard. We're a pretty cohesive unit. We're a good team. And then the struggle now is these people have to do the same thing within their departments. They have to build a cohesive leadership team within each department. But their first allegiance has to be to us. We're varsity. This is the varsity team. They have to have their allegiance to us. And then they have to build a team that has allegiance to that team. And then that's gotta go down throughout the system. Next thing they gotta do is create clarity in what we do and then, and we talked about that a little bit yesterday. And clarity for us is the vision. It's what our expectations are. What are our outcomes going to be? What do you need to accomplish in the end? Then we need to over-communicate that clarity and talk about it some more and reinforce what our expectations are. And then finally, we're gonna reinforce our clarity some more and say, yes, that's what we want, or no, that's not what we want. The next thing you're gonna talk about is The Five Dysfunctions of a Team. This is probably my favorite Lencioni book. I really, really enjoy it. I enjoy reading it. And Lencioni talks about five things that if, these are the pitfalls of any team you're trying to put together. And it doesn't matter if it's a team like department heads, if it's a nonprofit organization, if it's a football team, NFL team, it doesn't matter. But these are the five major dysfunctions. And the first one is trust, absence of trust. The fear of being vulnerable prevents team members from building trust with each other. We were talking about that a bit last night. When I said we have to kind of be naked, we have to be willing to be naked in front of each other and put ourselves out there, expose ourselves to some degree relating to our thought processes, our values and the things that we want to do. The second dysfunction is fear of conflict. Preserving artificial harmony stifles productive ideological conflict within the team. We talked about that again last night too in the other session. How many people have walked into a meeting and everyone's smiling and everyone's really uncomfortable and you walk in, you sit there for an hour, you leave the meeting and you didn't accomplish anything? But everybody's smiling, everybody's happy. Is that healthy? No, not at all. You can't fear conflict. You don't need to go looking for conflict, but you can't fear it. If it comes to you, you have to address it. And healthy conflict is vitally, vitally important. You have to have those difficult discussions, okay? Conflict doesn't have to be nasty and mean. Conflict simply means you're gonna have an open and honest discussion and you're gonna disagree. Lack of commitment. The lack of clarity and or buying prevents team members from making decisions they stick to. Once you've built trust, once you're comfortable having conflict, that next step is, okay, you're committed, right? Wes kind of talked about the rooster and the pig, right? Once committed. We need people who are committed. And if you have members of the team who are not committed, you're not gonna get anywhere. They're gonna bail on you when the going gets tough. And it will get tough, right? It will hit the fan, so to speak, if you know what I mean. You gotta have people committed to getting through that scenario with you. Avoidance of accountability. Related to the conflict piece, remember we talked last night again, you have to hold people accountable. We have to hold each other accountable. And if you're not willing to do that, it's gonna affect your group's performance. Because if there's no accountability, then nothing's getting done. Nobody's meeting timelines, nobody's meeting deadlines. And the last one is inattention to results. Pursuit of individual goals and personal status erodes the team's focus on collective success. So as an example, we've all seen politicians who are more interested in being on the news or the front page of the newspaper than they are in actually accomplishing anything. They'd much rather hear themselves speak and be popular versus be effective. If you're effective, for the most part, and you do it in a polite, stately manner, which we haven't seen in our national politics for some time now, you'll be okay. You'll both achieve and you'll be appreciated as well. So you need to pay attention to results and you have to value results. There we go. The Radical Leap. This is the next book. This is the one John Morgan came to do. LEAP is an acronym for Love, Energy, Audacity and Proof. So the first thing we did is I sit down with people. I said, why do you love what we do? And I had this conversation with every single staff member. Do you love working for the city of Sweet Home? And if you don't, why are you here? Because the reality in our world is we spend so much time at work. Spend more time with Julie and Legia and Brandon than I do my family. If you don't love what you're doing and the people you work with, why are you doing it? There's no sense in it. And I told them that. I say, if you don't love being here, come talk to me. Because we have two options. We can try and adjust your job a bit, as much as possible to fit within the needs of the city so that you do love what you do, or I will help you find someplace and something that you love. I'm happy to do that. And I've done it. I've done it with people from here. When you love what you do, you generate an energy and that energy is contagious. And when that energy is contagious, the people around you lift up their game and they try to max your energy. Leaders model intensity and energy that it takes to stay competitive. They do it because it's what they love to do. Hey, audacity. I've challenged him to be audacious. So we're gonna talk about change management and I'm gonna show you a picture and I want you to remember this because this was hard for people. There was, I believe in my observation that there was a time within this organization where people were told, this is your box, stay in it. I'm trying to get it to the opposite. I don't want you confined to a box. And I'll be honest with you, there were some external pressures for them to stay in a box. That's not what we're after. I want you to be audacious. I want you to do something outside of the norm that's gonna be amazing. The vector. It used to just suck, now it sucks and it excavates. Our guys did that. They made those modifications. The grout injection system saves us thousands of dollars for every manhole that we can now seal ourselves. And that was an old paint spray. That's audacious. Those are the things that we wanna do. The finance department. Brandon talked about revamping it. We took them in a room, they wrote down all the things they do. And what we discovered was one task would go from one desk to the other desk, back to that desk, then over to the third desk, and then Brandon had to check it off. Let's be audacious and eliminate those handoffs. Because that's time. Right? When it sits in someone's inbox, that's time. So as Brandon's been rewriting these job descriptions, we did it with the finance. We're being audacious. Right? What can we do better? How can we make this smoother, better and faster? And so the finance department's been doing that. There was a little heartburn initially because it was change. We're gonna talk about change. Pardon my language here, but in the book what they refer to are OSMs, which is oh shit moments. Like, oh shit, I don't know why I've been doing it this way for so long. We're starting to see some of that. We saw glimmers of that for the first time in the library on Wednesday. And it's kind of exciting. Because I'll tell you, with Rose being gone, I'm there and at least once a week. And they mentioned the process that they do and how inefficient it is. I'm like, well, why are you still doing it that way? Guess what their response was?
Oh, you said it that way.
There you go. So why are we still doing it that way? Let's change it. And they looked at me like, what? You can change that. The best page comes from the ground up. So we had a great conversation. What I've been trying to tell them for the past year finally, I think, started to click a little bit. And so they're supposed to have a pad next to their computer now. Anytime they're doing something that they don't know why they're doing it, or they think they can do better, they're writing it down. In order to start changing all those processes. We had a guest speaker come in for about a year and I met him in Las Vegas. My son likes to play travel basketball. Some of you know that already. We got on a team and so we went to Vegas to play in a tournament. And while they were there, they had brought in these motivational speakers. And a gentleman, John, gets up and he starts talking. And his dad is a Southern Baptist minister. So you can imagine the fire that he brings, right? He's like yelling at you when he's talking and it's loud and it echoes and I kid you not. So we're in this hotel outside of Vegas. And it's kind of a maze to get back to the rooms. When he started talking, you heard it from the gym. There's three basketball games going on in the gym and you could hear John. So you start walking and he was awesome. Immense amount of energy. He was an assistant coach at Willamette. No. Not Willamette. Yes, Willamette. He then, he took another job as an assistant at, oh my gosh, Purple School. Purple Private School. These three. Football team goes there every year for camp. Anyway.
George Fox?
No. Linfield, yes. He was an assistant at Linfield. Or he started at Linfield, then he moved to Willamette. He's now the head coach at Puget Sound Community College in Olympia. He just got that job a couple of months ago. Actually, he used me as a reference. But John came here on four or five occasions and spoke for us. And what he talked about is being audacious. You have to be audacious. You have to be uncomfortable. He says, you gotta be like the bear! So he's got a little drawl to it that I just can't get over. Says, you ever see a skinny grizzly bear? They step out on slippery rock to get their fish. They take a risk because if they don't, they get skinny and die. And we're the same one. If we're not willing to take risks, we cannot govern and we cannot manage from a place of fear. Failure is okay. So long as we learn from it and move forward. And we do, we fail. I've stood in front of the council meetings and said, that's my fault, or a budget meeting, that's my fault. We'll learn from it and we'll get better. And we have in all of those instances. But you can't be afraid of failure. And you've gotta be willing to step out on that slippery rock so that you can catch your fish. Now you gotta provide proof. And this is where we need to get better. And this is where I'm not very good. We have to show people what our accomplishments are. We have to do a better job of seeing our accomplishments and all the things that we've accomplished so far and what we're going to accomplish. We have to provide proof to the public so that we can build that credibility. Do what you said you would do. Right? Do what you said you would do. When you do that, you'll build credibility. That was the biggest thing we did in Ephrata. We said what we were gonna do and then we did it. And we did a little thing. And then we did another little thing. And then we did something a little bit larger and then a little bit larger. And then we raised the water bills like you would not believe to pay for a leaky water system and roads that were falling apart. We had three phone calls. When that new water door came out, we had three phone calls that complained. And when we told them what it was and why, oh, okay. Quick. And then they started to see the, there's a fourth, we did four, we broke the city basically into four quadrants. Did it over five summers. Eighty-five percent of the streets in Ephrata, brand new with new water lines under them, re-complains. Do what you say you're gonna do. They just also raised taxes. We had started talking about that five years ago. About two years ago, they raised taxes for street repair, street maintenance. Fortitude. Let's talk about fortitude. So in his training to become a Navy SEAL, Dan Crenshaw, he says, here's what you have to be to be a great leader. You have to be someone who can take a joke. Because people are going to persecute you. My high school basketball coach, we talked about it a little bit last year, Marty O'Brien, he said, when you get kicked in the ass, it means you're in front. That's gonna happen. LBJ, right? Sometimes you gotta be a jackass in a hailstorm. You just stand there and take it. That's a leader. Sometimes that happens. But you gotta be able to take a joke because people are gonna make jokes about you at your expense. You need to be someone that's productive. You need to be able to identify a goal and stick with it. You wanna be seen as reliable. You want people to ask things of you because you have a reputation for getting it done. Reliability is an element of fortitude. Goes back to that last point. Do what you say you're gonna do, right? You have to have delayed gratification. You gotta be even tempered. You gotta be humble. I bolded humble in this because we're gonna talk about humble a little bit later. And listen and internalize someone else's point of view before speaking at them. Talked about that last night too, right? Position adjust. The other thing he says, calm breeds calm, panic breeds panic. It's a major saying amongst Navy SEALs. The three tenants that I ask of all of our staff, number one, do the right thing. That's our guiding principle at all times. Always, always, always do the right thing. Number two, trust and be trustworthy. The Patriots had a thing, we talked about it again last night, when they had Tom Brady and they were good. Right? The Patriot way. I do my job and I trust that they're gonna do their job and we believe in the system and so it works. We're all working in the system. So we need to trust each other and be trustworthy. And being trustworthy means going back to doing what you said you would do, right? You gotta be a known commodity to be trusted. The Seahawks, they say, next man up. They believe in the system. The Seahawks believe that if a linebacker goes down, the next guy's gonna come in and run the system and they're gonna be just fine. Next man up. So trust and be trustworthy. The third thing that I require of our staff is being committed to the cause or commit to winning is what we say. And what is the cause? Cause number one is public service. We are servants. We are public servants. We need to be committed to service. The second cause is being stewards. Stewards of public funds and stewards of public assets. Change. I'm going through this really fast, but if I'm going too fast on it, I'm not going fast enough, I'm telling you. Right? So change management is a process. And what you have to understand is that when you're changing something, something is dying because it's ending. And so change management, as time comes across, you have people in the beginning, a lot of people who they don't wanna let go. Right? And as time comes, more and more of them enter what's called the neutral zone. And what that means is like, I'm not sure what I'm doing here. This is new. There's some confusion. And then you finally start to come out to the new beginning. So what are some of the symptoms that you see in change management? First, there's some excitement, some anticipation around this ending. There's confusion, reservations, frustrations, denial. You have skepticism. And finally, you get to exploration over here. This is where we are now. We're at this point where we're seeing innovation, resistance is dying, confusion is going away. Some of the ambivalence is starting to go away. People are starting to feel some relief and you're starting to see some high-energy learn. And then that was Managing, out of Managing Transitions, Bridget's book, one of the first good books written. The next thing we talked about is The Ideal Team Player. This is the book that we handed out to the staff. I'll never forget, you know, you hand it out, hand out stuff and you're like, are people gonna read? Are people gonna like it? What's going on? I hand it out and then I went down to the shop one day and Greg and I are talking, Greg Dominick and I are talking and Tommy Ruben, the mechanic. If you haven't seen Tommy, big beard. When you shake his hand, it's like grabbing a big old piece of meat. I mean, he's just, everything about him is just thick, manly and rough. Right? And he walks and I'm like, Ray, we need the next book, Five Dysfunctions of a Team. I read The Ideal Team Player like in two days. It's a great book. Totally taken back by it. The Ideal Team Player talks about what you need to hire. And for whatever reason, management went in this direction for years of trying to quantify skill sets and hire people based strictly on those skill sets. And what Lencioni has pinpointed in his research and what he's looked at is yeah, skill set's important, experience is very helpful. But more importantly are these three things. Because we're trying to put together a team. And sometimes when you put together a team, you take advantage of strengths. Another good book I'm not citing is called Strength-Based Management. And you take advantage of those strengths to carry your team as far forward as it can go. But if they're a good team player, they recognize their weaknesses and they'll work to strengthen them. So. You find people that are hungry. People who are motivated intrinsically to succeed. Try to find people who they show that they're willing to move forward and do what it takes. They want accomplishments. They want to make accomplishments. You find people that are smart. And smart sure means book smart, but it means people smart as well. You have to be able to relate to people to move forward. You have to be able to make partnerships. You have to be able to communicate well. And the last one is humble. Humble does not mean, oh gosh, golly me. Humble is actually, particularly in this book, a reference to having confidence. Not being cocky. Not being overly uh confident, but being comfortably confident in your skin of what your abilities and your skill sets are. When you can find this three things, the intersection there is the ideal team player. Here's the other one, uh, this last book, We Don't Make Widgets. It's it's uh, it's been around for a while. It's uh, and and what it is is it's a challenge to government to be more like business. I I handed this out like as soon as I got here to people and asked people to read it. Some people did, some people didn't. And and I could see the copies on people's desks, collecting dust and so recently we pulled it back out. I was like, hey, let's take a look at this book. And so we've been walking through it and and trying to identify, what's your widget? What do you produce? What is the thing that we produce for the public? And it's been challenging for some people. Uh, because I'm trying to, I'm trying to talk to them, you know, in a business standpoint. It's how much, how many can you produce for how much in as quick a timeframe as possible? Right? Because you're trying to put product out. We do the same thing in government, but identifying what those widgets are sometimes is a challenge. Uh, and of course, there are some some differences with with the government entity and process and those types of things. Understanding what customers and outcomes are, what's the factory? And the factory is us, staff. We produce the widgets. But having staff, each one sit down, identify, what widget do you produce? Uh, a few of them were uh, couldn't really come up with answers. Uh, so it's been a really good process. We're still working our way through that. We've identified widgets now. And we're now talking about how we can take those widgets uh and and be more efficient in our production. That was Ray Towers' Leadership Model in Cliff's Notes version. Wow, it's forty-five minutes. I'm not for sure. I was sorry. Up here is a quote. If you look, culture isn't just what we encourage, but what we allow to happen. If we're gonna allow absentee property owners to be derelict with their buildings, that's a culture. You're allowing that to happen. So and think about it, if there's one thing I hear about, I mean, I hear about a lot of different things. But I constantly hear about people unhappy with downtown. But we have allowed that. We have allowed that culture to permeate. And we're finally taking our first big step uh with the vacant building ordinance to correct that. If we allow it, that's gonna be part of our culture. So remember, and again, that comes, that's change. Change. And change is hard for people. But if we continue to do what we've always done, we will continue to be what we've always been. Right? Change is growth. Change is going to occur one way or the other, whether you like it or not. The challenge for us is can we manipulate that change and make sure it's positive change? So we've been working to do all of these things for the past four years. We have to have a conversation about capacity though. You saw in that CIP all of our needs for this community. And that's just capital, right? Those are just in the ground things we can touch and feel. There's a whole nother side of things that we need to work on as well, uh related to the culture of our community. Uh, and the culture of our government and what the government has done in the past and allowing to happen. But we don't have a whole lot of capacity left. So what I want to tell you is honestly, as we start moving forward, when you bring new initiatives to us, some of the questions that are, we're gonna have for you are going to include, okay, what do you not want us to do? And this is where we have to be strategic and prioritize because we have limited resources. Um, I can't, I can't work anymore hours. I can't do it. Brandon cannot continue on the pace that he's on. None of us can do more than what we're already doing. We just can't do it. We're there. So we've got to find ways to be strategic. One of those ways is we've been adopting technology. So Ray, how did you know that you might have had something click at the library last Wednesday? Right now at the library, if you want to check out a DVD, there's a blank case. You take the blank case up to the desk, the desk then goes back. They have to dig through the DVDs and find it, then they gotta bring it out. They gotta sanitize whatever, put together and hand it. So you gotta wait in line to do that. So one of their discussions were uh that they had was, we have this R D I F tag system on the desk. We wouldn't have to worry about, we could just put the disc on the shelf and then you just check it out like a book and eliminate. They had a lot of DVDs. We checked out a ton of DVDs. So I asked them, they're like, oh, that's expensive. We can't do that. Okay, okay. What's that gonna cost? Oh, probably about a thousand dollars for the little machine. Because what happened is you buy the machine, you know, like when you walk out of the store, there's those little towers that are really ugly. And when you walk through it, if you had the thing and it hasn't been run over, beep beep beep, alarms go off. All right, what's that gonna cost? Boy, it's a thousand dollars. Okay. Ladies, what do you cost me per hour? Well, we're about twenty dollars an hour. And how many hours do you spend tracking down these DVDs? Well, we each spend probably an hour a day dealing with DVDs. So let's do the math. How long is it gonna take before we? And since it's two hours a day, that's forty dollars a day times five days a week. Times four weeks. How many months before we pay off for that thousand dollars? Oh. It's gonna pay for itself. And now you free that two hours a day where we can do other things to provide even better service. Oh, okay. So now they're on board. One of your goals was to embrace technology so that we could do, so we could be more efficient, more effective. And we're continuing to try and 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 do that. And we will continue to try and find ways to be more efficient and more effective and create more capacity. Um, but Brandon is probably by embracing the power of Springbrook, which it's kind of ironic to say this because it's a, Springbrook is a love-hate relationship, right?
Mostly.
Mostly it's hate when you have to deal with it. But it is the uh dominant um financial system in the market right now, especially in in the Pacific Northwest. But by Brandon having the staff embrace the power of Springbrook, we've probably freed up well, just from Brandon's sake, I'll give you an idea. I used to have to do reconciliations and it was a stack of papers that big every week. And and I, and it was spreadsheets and handwritten legends. And it would take Pat five hours to do that easily. Right? It's a button. Report pops out. Difference. Oh, yep, balance, boom, done. It doesn't take me five hours to balance now, but yeah. So we've created, we've created an efficiency of like almost seventy percent, right? About seven percent efficiency. So we continue to do those things and try to be more efficient. And and I promise you, we'll continue to try and embrace technologies and find systems that allow us to be better. So um, but I need you to know that, that uh great, what what Greg's crew has done. Have any of you had a complaint about the Public Works Department not being productive recently?
Every day.
Any, okay, think about this. What Greg just talked to you about and what they've accomplished, they're doing with fewer people than they had five years ago. They're finding efficiencies. They're finding better ways. We're experimenting. Jeff, we need more accountability. And and I pushed the model I came from. I pushed that whole force argument thing on for that accountability. Just as okay, we'll do it. We tried it, boom, hey, it was good. It got us through, but we can be better. We're gonna be more efficient with this new model that we're gonna try and go to. So we'll continue to do those things. We'll continue to change. We're gonna continue to evolve and we're gonna continue to try to get better. Any questions on on uh what we're trying to build and what my vision is for us as an organization?
Ray, I've talked to you about this a couple of times. I I was reading, I could, I'm not very good at this, but I I would like to have the council members uh put together a list of things that we've accomplished in the last three, three and a half years. And when I start thinking about that, there's a lot of stuff. There is a lot of stuff. And it would be good, in my opinion, to write that letter to this, to the new area listing all of those things on that we've accomplished. Partially parts, but when you look at that and you look at what Greg has done with the the public works and those people have done a great job. Well, most of them. And then the police have gotten more respect than they probably have in forever. And Brandon tries to do a decent job. He feels a lot, but he's done good. And Blair being on board, uh we're we're getting some progress. And I I think that, I think that that's important for the council to tell people, you know, I I won't mention names that people did or like from the Christmas tree thing that we did because I know I miss somebody. And and the football field thing. My goodness, you know, if you started naming people off like Meltzer's and CTC and all those, you'll miss somebody for sure. You guys maybe think about that and and we can maybe put something again that we can put out to the like a letter to the editors type of thing. And we could just, anybody that doesn't want to sign off on that would be fine too. Anyway, I I think that for me, it would be a good idea. I would not be the person writing it because I can't spell, I can't write, all that stuff, but
You know what? Luckily, we have somebody on staff that's really good at that.
We do?
Yeah.
And well, it's not you, obviously.
No. So we've actually kind of had a similar discussion in-house, but Legia just wrote down, we're gonna, we're gonna work on that. We're gonna basically write an article. Uh, we'll, we'll share it with you and you can all sign off on it if you choose to or not. Um, and and we will uh talk about what we've accomplished over the past four years. Uh, thank you for that. Covid. We've dealt with Covid. If you haven't heard of of it, um, the wreaking havoc on the world. Uh, and we are uh not immune from that.
I'm halfway there.
Are you halfway?
I'm halfway.
So what have we done for Covid? We've done a lot for Covid. Uh, we've changed how we function. Public Works, they're coming in staggered shifts so that we have everybody there at the same time. We've got people who have shifted back and forth, working from home. I got to clean the men's restroom for uh the middle part of three or four months when we didn't have any janitorial services. So I scrubbed the toilet. And we hear an all. Gentlemen, we need to get better about that. And uh it it's wreaked a lot of havoc. It's what we've been trying to do. Blair's had staff that we've had working from home at different times. There's an uptick. Governor says something, there's a different mandate, so we send people home. Um, and then things get better and then they come back. We installed the ionization system in here. Um, so we're, all of our air that once it gets recirculated is going through an ionizer in the air when it comes back in. Um, is is about as pure as you're gonna find at this point. Uh, anywhere. But it it's really made things difficult and challenging for us. But our staff has persevered. And I've been, I mean, from the library, part-time staff, you know, we adjusted the library hours so they could be home with kids in the morning and then work in the afternoon. Um, to to Lacy, um, uh, we've been super flexible. We've had kids, we've had uh staff members, children come in here so they could take classes, so they could get good internet because they may not have great internet at home. So they've come in here to do Zoom calls when they need to do that. And we've set them up in here in the conference room. Um, it's been, it's been a challenge, but everybody to the, to the person has been great about working through it. You know, people come in and they've been like, hey, Ray, I don't feel bad, but especially at the beginning because we didn't really know. I want, I got this cough. I don't feel real hot. Okay, go on. All right. And then as soon as they can get their test, hey, I'm back. And then they come back. Uh, we did have a scare at Public Works where we thought we had two people at one point that might have had it. Ends up neither one of them had it. Uh, we did have an issue here in City Hall. Um, but everybody was great about it. Everybody worked through it. Everybody persevered through it and uh, I honestly am very, very proud of our our staff for working through it. It's certainly been a hindrance to us. But uh it didn't stop us. And I think that was a big deal for us. Uh, the fires. The fires, uh I don't know that I've ever been more tired, more exhausted or more scared in my life than when we had the fires. They got probably closer than a lot of people know. Uh, and particularly for me personally, they were like right on the other side of the hill kind of from where I live. And so for me personally, uh, I, you know, load up the truck, guys. Load up the trailer, put everything on there. Uh, we have a camper, an old crummy camper that I'd like to just leave on the side of the road, but unfortunately they've been traced the VIN numbers that come back to me. And I said, hey, Shannon, my wife, my kids, put some, put my clothes in there. Um, and hook in my, my oldest son and two boys, hook that up to to my uh, to the truck. Uh, you guys hook up whatever you need and put everything on the trailer and we're gonna go up to my sister-in-law's. About an hour later, I get a phone call from my son. Hey Dad, can we leave all the stuff in the trailer? Let's take the boat. Because when this hits, if this hits the fan, what are we gonna do? We'll have stuff. But we don't need it. That's what insurance is for. Let's hook up the boat. We'll fill the can in the boat and let's take the boat. All right, buddy, take the boat with you. Um, and then uh Trey Kennedy, who's uh the city attorney in Lebanon, offered to let me put my trailer out of his house. So I could still be close and we could function. The city of Lebanon and the city of Albany offered us space to where we could uh, as department heads, have someplace to meet. Uh, Albany was gonna let us have a library that they had shut down. You guys can come in and have a library if you need it. Both Lebanon and Albany offered us room to take our fleet if we wanted to try, if we need to evacuate fleet or equipment. That was uh, that first particularly uh thirty-six hours, seventy-two hours and have ballpark was something else. But uh, again, our staff was there. I wasn't the only staff member who was telling my family, hey, I gotta do this. I need you to to take care of things at home. Um, other staff members had families that were doing the same thing. So uh, the rain and the flood. You know, the guys just showed up. I get a phone call from Greg, hey, we got guys, they came in this morning. They were working on a Sunday morning. You know, they saw the rain and they were concerned. And one called the other and they all just show up and they start doing work. Um, and then we called a couple of other people in because we wanted their help. We called the G N to help us put messages out of what was going on. Every department head called and checked in without me having to check anything. Ray, how you doing? Do you need anything? Little management called rare good. Uh, people just called to check in because they were invested, right? Um, yeah, thank you. We called Tricia and she came in and helped us with some mapping. Uh, so we faced the, literally faced the fire this year and um I think we came out in really good shape. So, um in this venture. Any questions on that?
Well, I I do have some comments on the the fires. If that fire came across Calaquia River, it could have had a city that was gone.
Absolutely. Just like Detroit? Yep, absolutely.
That particular first night, we had sixty-two fire calls. Sixty-two fire calls in one night. But again, the community came together. We had almost all of our volunteers there that were normal, you know, not normal, what I mean, that no, normally came. Uh, and we had tables, long, big long tables, full of food and drinks for that whole time. And it kept coming in even after the fire was kind of gone away. And I don't know if you realize this, but Upper Calaquia, they were gone. They were taken out of there. Markola Road, Rust Creek Road, they were taken out of there. It was scary as the dickens. I've never had that ever before. So we were pretty non-lucky when you consider Detroit and Blue River and some of those down there. But that's what our community does. I'm not, we're not, it's not just for us, all cities, I think. But uh, it's pretty amazing.
I think I sweated harder when Ray, Ray said he was nervous. I was nervous.
Well, yeah, he probably did stuff.
Well, I'm just worried about power. I I now don't have power. I don't have water. I now don't have power. I don't have water in the community.
Yeah.
And let alone the fire. I couldn't even fight the fire.
Yeah.
So.
Well, then we have, we had the water issue, too, on top of that. We don't have water for fires. We can't fight fire. Because I can tell you what, you can go through a thousand gallons of water just like that if you got enough resources. But anyway.
And something that we need to, I want to make sure you're aware of too, is ODF, Sweet Home Fire, uh, and, and the Forest Service were great partners for us. That first twenty-four hours was scary. Uh, I called Dave Berenger names. I did apologize to Dave, because I told him, yeah, I was talking about you behind your back. And he's like, hmm, everybody does. So, um, but they ended up being great, great partners, inviting us into their meetings, so we could sit here and, and we, uh, again, the technology of this building proved to be very, very imperative to us. They would actually come in here and, and we would check in with the, the different crews. Uh, ODF was, was super responsive and helpful. And, uh, so we had a great experience with the Capitol Christmas tree and Nikki down here. Nikki was tremendous during, uh, the fires as well. Oftentimes, feds tend to sometimes get in their own way. My understanding is that when our, so this section was some of the toughest terrain, and it got tackled by our logging community, more so than by anybody, especially initially. Uh, our private, local logging community saved this town really, honestly. And when they got to where they're hitting federal land, oftentimes, that's a huge issue. And Nikki said, no, do what you gotta do, save what you, do what you need to save it. Uh, and that's, that's can be shown in here too. So, um, we're pretty blessed that way. That's all I have. Any questions? How long was that?
An hour, five minutes. I tell you, you know, on the far side of it again, if you, if you recall the fire that killed nine in Colorado, that was because of communication or the lack of. And that's why we should, it was really important for you guys to be here today.
It was good. You don't know, Dave lost his cellphone the first day. That's why I was calling, and instead I'd be calling, you know, the answer, and then it's. He promises he will not lose his cellphone next time we have a catastrophic fire. Any other questions? I gave you a whole bunch of books. Feel free to read them. Or not. So the next tab, it's seven o'clock, so I'm gonna run through this as fast as I can, so we can get out of here. The next tab is our, is our boards and our committees. Uh, so we should very quickly, let's talk about these. Make sure you understand, I'm gonna put staff who oversee these committees or work with these committees, uh, on the spot a little bit. Ray tries to leave the room, so.
I'm afraid if I don't get up, I won't move.
Planning Commission. Planning Commission required by state law. Planning Commission, the whole idea really is kind of an independent body, free of, of, uh, political influence to determine land use. And it's the only one that's that way. And again, it goes back to the importance of property rights in our nation and in our history. And, uh, that's what they are, are there for. Uh, you can see who the members are. You're going to get, uh, there's two vacancies. We interviewed, not we, uh, the Admin Finance Committee interviewed, uh, four applicants, is that right? She left the room, of course. Uh, four applicants for those two vacancies. And, and, uh, their recommendations are actually in your council packet. I still will fill them up. They've been working really hard on the development code through several drafts. It has not been a fast process. And again, COVID and wildfires have slowed that down significantly, but we're definitely making progress, so.
I would just add, uh, those two appointments are really, really important. We actually had to cancel the last one again because of the lack of. So, wanna get that filled up?
Budget Committee. Uh, again, we've, Brandon's already talked about them. And how important they are. They're again a balance and a tool for you as a council to help stay in tune with the desires of the community. It's interesting, because municipal budgeting is not like your household budgeting. You have so many restricted funds, and a lot of times, people don't understand that. Uh, which you, you know, you can't raise water rates to help pay for parks. You can't raise your sewer rates to help pay for streets.
You could, but then we're all.
Yeah, you could. Yeah, there we are, excuse me.
You could do it once. Once you can fix your streets if you do water or sewer jobs.
Correct. If we do a, so when I first got here, we were working on a project, actually the one on Elm, which we still haven't finished, because we went back to look at it and, and try and do it better. Um, and I said, well, if you're doing a water and sewer project, they can pay to replace the streets, and they're.
Everybody in Public Works locked up.
Everybody in Public Works is like, oh, no, we can't. You can't do that. Pretty sure you can. So, you know. Uh, I thought Tricia's head was gonna explode there for a little minute. So, which makes sense. If a water sewer project ruins your street, then you should have to repair the street with water sewer money, right? And that's the whole thought process. Hey, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. So if we could go back to the Planning Commission. According to this, uh, it has two vacancies. And we just renewed one. So they're really, we renewed one, or.
Yes, you did.
So that, so we still have another vacancy, right?
No. Your reappoint, your, your recommendation from Admin Finance was to reappoint Eva, and then you are recommending the next two highest.
But Eva was, Eva was one of the two highest.
Yeah.
Was there originally three?
Yeah, so essentially, yeah, so you're reappointing Eva, and you interviewed her for that. And you scored her in there to ensure that she was still one of your top candidates. But you, you, you took the top three.
Oh. Okay, well, that, that wasn't the way I understood it, but thank you for clarifying it.
Yeah. Uh, Budget Committee. Again, very important and very unique to Oregon. I don't know of another state that does it the way Oregon does it. Um, but the, uh, matching and the balance and the pro, and the, and the process. Uh, if there's anything, people can't say they don't have the opportunities to have input on the budget. If anybody tries to tell you that, you can just look at them, kind of get one of those grins on your face, like, eh, no, you have plenty of opportunities. All open public meetings. Park and Tree Committee's been extremely active. They've done a fantastic job, as you can see, with Sankey Park. They, uh, it's a really diverse group. So if you recall, a few years ago, we come, we couldn't get enough people to be on the Park Committee. And we couldn't get enough people to be on the Tree Committee, so we combined them, because it kind of made sense. And that's been tremendous for us, actually. Uh, that brings a tremendous and varied skill set to the group. And, uh, this is a group that has accomplished a lot in the last year and a half, two years since we've done.
And they didn't like it to begin with, I like.
No, they didn't like it at all. They did not want, they, they did not like it at all. But I think they're there now. This is a group also that went out and raised about forty thousand dollars in a matter of about six weeks.
Oh, gosh, what were we talking, ten days? I thought it was like nineteen days, yeah.
They were not raised forty thousand dollars very quickly.
Matching money.
Um, yeah, which was matching money. So they went out to the community and asked people for donations, got forty grand in a matter of two days. And we used that for matching.
He goes to Angela, she can read here, didn't she?
Uh, YAC. Yeah, with no school and COVID and whatnot, that's, it's been nearly impossible to get that group together. So we'll, we'll continue to work to reinvigorate that group. Diane's gonna jump in there. Board of Appeals. I don't think the Board of Appeals has met since I've been here. And quite honestly, I'm not even exactly sure what they do. You go to them if you want to appeal something.
Let's not be there. He's out there in twenty seventeen.
Uh, yeah, so if the building official makes a call and they don't like it, then they can go to the Board of Appeals. So it's building construction. Library Board. That's probably the one that we really want to chat, probably more than anything. You know, the Library Board is advisory to you, but I think they've kind of functioned very independently up to this point. And, uh, it would be good, and we talked, uh, when I went to the Library Board meeting, I think it was in, you know, December, had that meeting here. We talked about trying to kind of bring them into the fold in ways that we could do that. And one of the things that came up, talking with Kevin, who's the chair, and with the mayor, and Diane, who used to be on the Library Board, uh, is, is that council liaison position. This way, they can hear, one thing that was apparent in our meeting with them is there were things going on at the council level that the Library Board wasn't aware of. So I think it would be good just to have that interaction. Dave does that with the Park and Tree Committee. I think that would just be a positive to have happen. And so I think, uh, the mayor and I would like to ask if you would entertain changing the ordinance that would allow a non-voting councillor to be a liaison, similar to what they do at the Chamber of Commerce. If you guys would, would be interested in that.
Personally, I think it's a great idea, because communication was part of the problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, I don't think we've got a lot of feedback on that, though, I remember. But it would be good to have some of it.
Yeah, yeah. And then just in conversations with them, they, you know, Kevin and the others, they, they think it would be good as well.
It seems odd that we don't have. Considering that it's our library. I guess I don't think they.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so we'll work with Robert, and we'll, we'll try to get a change to that ordinance. Under the committee, so that there can be a, a council liaison. It would probably be a non-voting number. Um, and might be able to be a voting member if you'd be interested in that. Not if that's good or bad. Being group thick is something we want to avoid, I think. I would be worried that a councillor could influence that board if they actually had that vote versus using persuasion as a leadership tool, which we talked about in the district plus. Uh, we'll, we'll bring that forward to you. Uh, all hazard mitigation. I don't even know what that is. It hasn't met since I've been here. Uh, twice that we should look into. Seeing, you know, I have this crushing fear that it's like some kind of state-required thing, and we're not doing it.
They send letters and that stuff.
So we'll look at that. We are, uh, updating the, the all-hazard mitigation plan. Naturalized. Yeah, so, but, and just to share with you on that, and I, I have shared this with the council prior, but not since the two of you have been on. Uh, Jeff and Dave and I are working with the city of Lebanon, in, in Brownsville, Lebanon Fire, Lynn County, uh, and Brownsville's Fire District are like a regional emergency management position. Uh, what we have learned through our emergencies is we're trying to fire ourselves out here. And so if we can work together to identify resources in our region, uh, luckily, uh, the three communities, we get along. I, I mean, if, uh, Brownsville was having some issues with their wastewater and treatment plant. And, uh, we were ready to offer staff if we needed it. Uh, again, through the fire, Lebanon was gracious to allow us to move our fleet there or to operate there in their building, if we needed to. So, we all work together. The, the relatively new chief at Lebanon Fire is a really good guy. Uh, is doing really good things there. Uh, so we can all kind of work together and we seem to be able to along. Our Lebanon P is involved as well, too, of course. But we're trying to get that regional approach. Uh, and actually Commissioner, former Commissioner Tucker was very supportive. Uh, and he actually supported trying to, with the county to help fund it as well, because it would be definitely a full-time position. It would include education, uh, so tabletop drills, uh, press releases, articles, newsletters. And then again, one of the unique things that we have in and around Sweet Home is heavy equipment. And knowing what equipment is out there, who has it, and who to reach when we need that equipment, and who is the backup to reach. Putting all of that together in one location where all of us as communities have access to it. You know, Rick Franklin's got a ton of equipment, but he's not there. If we need something, could we get ahold of Rick Franklin and, and all of the eastern drillmen for their help? Rick would help us in a heartbeat, absolutely. Uh, but do we know where to call? Uh, Rick has business all over the place, so who's, who's next in line if we can't get ahold of him there, those kind of things, so.
So Ray could just hazard mitigation in that same.
I'm, I'm gonna look into it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it, David was kind of the help, he was.
The state has a hazardous communication system. And what, what are they doing? And why isn't there one on the county? And, you know?
So the county has one, um, emergency management position that they found. Super nice guy, works really hard, but one. And, and when, when it hit the fan on both occasions, he was overloaded. When you, when we've met in the past, we had meetings to talk about preparations and whatnot. Uh, he's been super helpful, but in, in an emergency like that, he's, he's overwhelmed. So that was one of the draws, is, is the county commissioner, Mr. Will, had recognized that that in an emergency, we were vastly underprepared. And, um, it's just kind of a whole chain of command, where we would have a regional person to help interact with the county. Uh, just streamline things and, and help bring all the resources where they needed to be.
I know they don't have any kind of language for pandemic-like realities that we have faced.
No.
I don't think they can address it whatsoever.
Uh, so we will be asking in the budget money to help fund that position. Uh, Lebanon Fire is a go. They're, Lebanon Fire and the city of Lebanon have said, we're doing this. You can come with us or not. So we can contribute and get something out of it, or they're gonna go their own route, and we get nothing, and then we would have to figure out a way, um, to fund a position fully on our own. And I don't know that it's a full-time spot. It is, uh, I think initially it would be, to get everything put together. It'd be a full-time position for probably six months to a year. Uh, but, but then after that, I'm not sure what it would be. So I really think that this is a better option for us, and, and emergency management needs to be shared. Uh, it needs to be regionalized, and we, and again, it's solid here in fire too, so. We're, we're working right now on identifying each community's needs. We're working on identifying the funding methodology.
I haven't even had a drink.
Uh, we're working, so you do it strictly by population. Okay, well, great. Well, the city of Sweet Home's population is part of Sweet Home Fire's population. So Sweet Home Fire has to pay, that means the city of Sweet Home's population has been paid for twice. And so we just forget percentages, you know, are you an overall, to your overall percentage? So we're trying to hash through those things in what we think is the most fair and equitable way. Everybody here, and also being mindful. Brownsville Fire is strained, and you don't have a lot of funds. So, well, if it happens. So that's administration. You guys have now been here in this meeting for ten hours, twenty-six minutes, fifty-eight seconds.
And just to let you know, we don't need a cough time.
Yeah, by the way, I won't be here Thursday, Friday next week.
And we won't be here Tuesday.
That's all right. Because, yeah, the ordinance will be here next time. Okay. Any questions, comments, moving ahead, moving forward? I have one last item for you.
What?
One last item for you. You're going to lose your honor.
Oh crap.
Yeah, I'm at. Is that in this folder?
Might be on your USB drive.
Is just changed.
All right, here we go.
Well, good evening. I'm not able to stick around for the rest of the day, so Ray asked me to put together a short video to recap and review a few of the things we talked about yesterday.
Councillor Gerson, are you, are you hearing this?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Before that, I'd just like to say thank you for inviting me down to Sweet Home to spend a couple hours with all of you. It is literally one of the funnest things I get to do in life and one of my favorite subjects to talk about is local government. Remember the motto that I put out on that first day, and I'm sure Ray shared with you several times. The right thing to do is almost always what creates the most good for the most people for the longest time. To do that and to find out what that most good and longest time and most people is, you need to remember the four Ps. Partnerships, politics, procedures, and practicalities. First off, with the partnerships, just to review that, your goal of having good partnerships, or when you know you've got a good partnership going, is your government becomes professionally boring or boringly professional. Meaning you've got a culture that is set up that is good at what it does and does not create extra drama. And that means functioning as a team. And team is the most important thing in local politics. Team is the most important part of being a city council member. You don't have any authority as yourself. You only have authority as part of a majority vote. And that's what the Constitution designs for us, that it's about coming together and forming that team, that partnership. It takes time and it's important that you stay in your role. As a council member, you have a very set role that's set by your state constitution, by local ordinances, et cetera, et cetera. Ray has a narrow lane he has to stay within. Mayors, voters, commissioners, et cetera, it all flows out. When teams break down, when governments break down, whether they're local or national, as people get outside of their role and their responsibility. So stay within that role. Politics. We talked a lot about leadership, about leading does not mean following the crowd or doing what the crowd wants or following polls. It also does not mean dictating or rioting or going at your own way. That leadership is that narrow gap between those two that generally I called it is, it's the fine art of persuasion. And I described that as you have to persuade people to be a good leader. Having shared values is incredibly important and showing your work. That politics means doing a little bit of show business sometimes, that even if you put in a ton of work as a council member on your own, if the public doesn't see it, they might not believe it. So don't be afraid to recreate study sessions and that kind of thing. Or rehave the arguments so that the public gets to have the benefit of the hard work you've already done. Procedures are taking some of those values and making them a little bit more solid. Written rules, ethics. Having, again, following the Constitution and adopting some things that are very important. And the two most important rules I think you can adopt as a city council are no surprises and no disparaging. That as a council member, in your private time or in public, you will never disparage a staff member or the public. And you will never surprise a staff member or the public. And the staff should reflect that back to you. Ray and any other staff member should never surprise you at a council meeting. And Ray and any other staff member should never disparage you, either privately or publicly. That keeps that team, that keeps everything moving forward. Now, the practical side of things, the practicalities, are to actually put everything into motion, not just have written rules, but to follow those written rules. Having processes, having a way of doing business that again is boringly professional or professionally boring. It is harder work and it is slower to make sure everybody has their say and that you compromise when needed. And you follow those values and everybody gets on the same page before you move forward. I think I gave you the quote about politics is the art of boring hardwood. It is slow, it is tedious, and you have to really want change in order to get change and be consistent in your direction for change. The great thing about it is, as I think I reminded you, is once you have that change, if you've done it in the right way, slowly, carefully, leading people, persuading people to follow, that change will be around for a long time. Again, the goal is to create the most good for the most people for the longest period of time. You can get that only if you follow that art of persuasion and stick together as a team. It's slow. There are times, and you have to understand this, that there is no win for you personally. You'll be up on a dais and there will be a crowd and people will be mad at you. And the right thing to do is always going to be the right thing to do, whether it's popular or not. I use the metaphor, one of LBJ's old stories, of sometimes in elected leadership, you have to be a donkey in a hailstorm. You can't get out of it, you just have to take it. That's the price we pay for going into this kind of work. That being said, I think you have one of the greatest jobs in the world. To be on a city council in a small town will give you the opportunity, maybe bigger than any other point in your life, to do a lot of good for people. You will never have this opportunity again for the rest of your life. You have a few short years in order to do some real good for your community if, if you can stick together. If you can be a team, if you can follow what the founders set out for us to do, which is to persuade one another and compromise when we have to. And then compromise a little bit more, get a little bit more the next time and just keep after it. You'll see change start to happen. I want to thank you again for being able to come down here to Sweet Home, see your town, to hang out with you, find people for a little while and talk. I'm sure I've said this a few times, but thank you. And I'm sure I've said this a few times, reach out to me at any time. You've got all my contact information. I love talking about this stuff. I'd love to have any kind of further conversations with any of you. Thank you again. Have a great rest of your weekend. Good luck. God bless and good night.
All right. Okay, so real quick, tomorrow, we're going to go through your vision, your mission and your goals. We're going to start here at noon. The Super Bowl starts at 3:30.
We don't have.
3:20. Noon.
There should be things that you won't have to wait because they don't do the anthem anymore.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.